We're joined now at the Boston Public Library by the mayor of Boston, Michelle Wu, for her February Ask the Mayor appearance. The number, if you want to call her or text a question or a comment, is 877-301-8970. If you're here at the library and would like to ask a question, you can find our brand-new colleague, Nicole, who is right there. Raise your hand, Nicole. And Annie, who is somewhere in the neighborhood. We'll see her in a couple of seconds. Mayor Wu, it's good to see you. And I think you're bearing gifts today, not for me and Marjorie, but for everybody. Is that correct?
Happy Valentine's Day.
A happy Valentine's Day.
So, in celebration of Valentine's Day and Black History Month, for my show and tell this one, we have a gorgeous, gorgeous flower arrangement from the -- it's called Boss Shop in the South End. It is the first kind of physical retail location of black-owned boss, which is a collective owned by Jada Turner, who sources and highlights, promotes local black-owned businesses. And so, this particular arrangement was actually created by two young black women who have a business called Social Butterflies. They do events, they do the floral arrangements, and it's beautiful.
Totally beautiful.
It is gorgeous.
Can we say their names? Valerie Francois and Paige Pasly.
Yep, for Social Butterflies, and then the business owner, Jada Turner.
Totally beautiful.
Mayor Wu always shows up with wonderful little things.
She does, and we show up with nothing except for ourselves.
But we're going to improve, we're going to up our game.
Sparkling wit.
One of these, sparkling wit, that's right. So, Mayor Wu, let's start with something that's going to be good news for a lot of people around town that are struggling with their taxes. What's going on with the Tax Help Coalition?
Yeah, we are now multiple decades in of a really important city program that actually doesn't get a lot of airtime or attention, but there's a free tax prep program for anyone in the city who's making $60,000 or less. They help tens of thousands of residents every year, and you can go to, let me just double-check, I think it's bostontaxhelp.org. And there are walk-in locations, there are workshops, and so, we just want people to feel prepared and ready. Okay, it's the Boston Tax Help Coalition.
She's checking her phone.
BostonTaxHelp.org, that's right.
And is there, did you say, is there an income ceiling for eligibility for this, or no?
So, for entirely free tax prep, it's $60,000 or below for income, and they're available in seven different languages and in person and through consultation.
That's terrific. I didn't know about that either. You, we've talked to a lot of guests this week since you named the members of the reparations task force in furtherance of an order, or whatever it's called, passed by the city council. The thing we were curious about, which both of us really liked, is you picked two 11th graders to sit. What was the thinking behind this, Mayor Wu?
And one kid from U.S.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, this was in part a charge from the city council and from the many, many people who have pushed for and advocated for the city to formally and officially take a look at our role in history, in the slave trade, in the many ripple effects and continued benefits that the city of Boston as a formal government entity profited from, and our role in that. And the charge was to do so in an intergenerational way. So, there was a clear call for young people to be represented, and we have not only a college student, but high school students, two 11th graders from the Berg who are incredible. They each had, we had asked for recommendations from many, many sources, and educators and peers, and then the two of them decided that they actually both wanted to have another classmate on as well with them. So, they both are on the basketball team, then they report back when they come to the meetings of how the game went for everyone, and so, they're fantastic.
You know, Mayor Wu, my understanding from our colleague, Sarai Wintersmith, who did a piece on this, is that there's some discussion about whether the reparations should include people who are actual descendants of slaves, or people who came here from other countries but are black and have been subjected to the kind of racism that, whether you're a descendant of slaves or not, you're subject to. Has that been decided, or is that up in the air, or what's that about?
Ultimately, the task force will lead forth these recommendations and work with research partners, but my understanding, and where I think our administration and from what I understand the city council process, our understanding, our goal is for this to focus on the specific impacts of enslavement and the city of Boston's role in that, and therefore to, you know, there are many, many wide-ranging, continued, lasting disparities and inequities that stem from racial injustices tied to many official practices. We want this committee to focus on the practice of enslavement and what that has meant, and how that continues to impact residents today, and to create some official repair and restoration for that.
And the deadline is June 2024?
There's not a hard deadline, but I would say the real deadline, what we as a city want to ensure that we are fully prepared for is we have two big anniversaries coming up in July 2026, the big anniversary for our country, July 4, 2026, and then in 2030, the city of Boston will celebrate our 400th anniversary as a city. And so, by both of those, certainly by 2026, I would like us to be well on the pathway to having identified changes that we need and implementing some of them.
We're going to get to your calls and texts in a second at 877-301-8970. Last time you were here, or maybe the time before, we talked about your rent stabilization proposal, at least the initial shot at it. You have subsequently actually filed something with the city council with a modest change, I guess you could say. For those who are not familiar with the content, could you give a brief description of what it is you filed?
Yeah, it's a little bit in the weeds, I'll just mark that. There are a couple of dimensions as to how cities in the past had been able to affect rents in some way, and we are putting forward specific parameters on those and asking for, basically, city council approval, but then statewide approval because of a ballot initiative that actually banned any municipality in Massachusetts from having any way to regulate rents for several decades now. So, we're in some ways restoring the ability for cities to have this conversation and putting forward our own proposal, so the state house also understands what we would be looking to do and the general public. Those provisions are, one, to cap the rate of increase of rents annually at inflation plus 6%, except in very, very high inflation years, that number would not be able to go above 10%. For example, in this year, we're ranging on 7%. It wouldn't be the 7 plus 6, the 13, it would just be capped at 10 overall, but most years it would be below that with sort of more average inflation. We would also exempt new construction that, for the first 15 years, so we're not disincentivizing what would be a very, you know, to be able to recover your costs from building a new building through rents. We are also allowing for exemptions for owner-occupied properties that are six units or smaller. That's generally how we define smaller properties in Boston, and there's just more, it's less of a professionalized industry there, there's just more informal nature of that, and so, we want to respect small property owners. Those are the main provisions.
A couple of quick questions about this, then we will get to your calls and texts at 877-301-8970. First, are you worried about the city council vote? I mean, you know far better than we, some think this doesn't go far enough, that 10% is too high. Obviously landlords, even though I don't understand it at all, think the 15-year exemption is not enough, which suggests to me they haven't even read it. There's some more moderate-leaning people in the city council that don't think rent control should happen at all. We focused with you almost totally on the legislature. Is it possible this doesn't make it through the city council?
That is, I mean, anything is possible. This is a real legislative process, and it has to happen at both levels of government. I think some of the early coverage of our proposal, even before all the details came out, were just that we're bound to face opposition on all sides, because we're really trying to thread a very specific needle here, which is, we need to boost housing production, we need to have more affordable housing created, and we need to protect people in their homes today, while we're getting to the point where supply and demand are closer to meeting and easing the pressure. And so, we, you know, too far on the restrictions and affecting the ability to make projects work and for people to invest and live and be able to maintain housing, that pushes, has impacts on a different side that we're also trying to change. And then, too little restriction, and then we're not actually keeping people in their homes either. So, this is really a balance that we have, that we're putting forward based on a whole year of looking at the current conditions, past conditions, and nationwide.
Have you talked to city councillors about this?
They have been, you know, we have had conversations about what we're putting forward, we've had some initial conversations, but by no means have we kind of locked down everything.
Are you confident, you have votes, or you're not? Are you confident you have enough votes there to get them elected?
I'm confident that this is a proposal that meets every criteria that we were set out to meet. I think it's a matter now of whether the council also values those same goals that we have, or if they're trying to do something different.
You know, just one last thing along these lines, and then we'll get to the phone calls at 877-301-8970. I'm old enough to remember when we had rent control here once before, and one of the big gripes about rent control was that it was not means-tested, so you had like a person that was on the state supreme court, was in a rent-controlled apartment, a guy that--
Excuse me, the head of GBH.
Is that right?
Many generations ago, but yes, the head in Cambridge, yes.
I know that a guy that was, for a while, was the mayor of Cambridge, who was also in a rent-controlled apartment, but there's not any means-testing here. So, what was the thinking that went into that?
Yeah, we're actually proposing a system that some, some kind of in the national sphere are calling rent stabilization 2.0. It's a different model than decades ago when there were sort of hard caps on the amount that you could charge for rent, which were usually far below. This is more about making it predictable for everyone who lives in a home. Right now, people who own their own homes have Prop 2.5, you know that your property taxes aren't going to go up by astronomical rates every year because of that law. But if you are a renter, you're subject to the whims of that particular landlord and their life conditions or needs or attitudes. Most landlords in the city are not increasing the rents by double digits every year. It is, I believe, irresponsible if you're thinking about the costs of your tenants getting kicked out and then having to have costs of turning over the apartment and all that. Most landlords want good, stable relationships with their tenants, and that requires some degree of predictability. However, we have seen in many situations in Boston, particularly in some neighborhoods, that gentrification displacement is happening because buildings are turning over and there's a pressure to get all the landlord, all the tenants out, or some landlords are trying to take maximum advantage of market pressures. And so, this is about guardrails for those extreme rent gouging situations.
Want to take some phone calls here?
Well, I have actually one last thing about this, and then we will take some phone calls. Condo conversion, I assume, is what you fear.
Yeah.
I would argue that that's the escape hatch for, should this become law, and should a landlord not want to comply. You have pretty modest inhibitions on condo conversion. Can you briefly describe what the disincentives are?
We have, actually, the city has had in place for a number of years now, rules where if you are converting a building from all tenants, renters, to condos, you have to give a certain period of time for tenants, particularly there are provisions for tenants who are seniors and tenants with disabilities that have an even longer period of time, as well as a financial compensation component. So, that has been on the books for some time. This would strengthen that, make it more consistent, and also provide some just cause eviction protections as well.
But no preclusion from conversion, just more expensive and more time-consuming, mitigation. Let's go to the calls. Marjorie?
Chris in Hyde Park, thank you for calling.
Hey, Chris.
Hi, hi, guys. Hi, Madam Mayor, I'm a big fan of yours. I helped on, I volunteered on your election, but I, the one thing that got more votes than you in the election was restoring our elected school committee, and I know the city council is talking about it today, but I just don't understand why you aren't supportive of it and aren't hearing the people on this.
Thank you, Chris, for calling in, for raising it, for advocating on this issue. I have spent now almost 14 months under the hood of, I think, one of, if not the most important function of our city, providing the pathway for our young people to be nurtured and educated and connected with opportunity. We have had a tremendous amount of destabilization through the Boston Public Schools over many years, right? Seven superintendents in the span of a decade, and many, many changes that come along with that. I have never been supportive of an elected school committee. I ran for this job because I want to make a difference in the schools, I want to have accountability and responsibility to be able to make the changes that we need with the advocacy of our residents, with the partnership of all of our anchor institutions and community organizations. So, that has never been my position. I was, I ran, you know, not being for a fully-elected school committee, and this moment also is one where we need to have a focus on stabilizing and getting our school facilities up to date, and mental health supports, and some of the academic changes that we're making, and so, I'm not supportive of changing the governance structure at this time.
Chris, thanks for the call.
Chris, thank you for the call. You know, while we're talking about the schools, there's a new legislative proposal that would eliminate Massachusetts' ability to take over so-called underperforming schools. I know there was a lot of threats last year about the state taking over the Boston Public Schools. The record hasn't been great about taking over other school districts. So, where are you on this proposal? Is that something you would support?
I will say that part of the reason why we have, anyway, I'm trying to find a nice way to say this, it took a tremendous amount of energy, unnecessary stress, and anxiety for the entire school community and all of the pieces of that to fight off state takeover. It has not been shown to be effective in other communities. I've heard from fellow mayors, former mayors in other parts of the country, fellow mayors in Massachusetts, who've said, "We were in a situation, we somehow couldn't avoid the takeover, and now we are still in it, and it's not helping." And we're continuing to deal with the stress and the extra baggage and distraction of it. And so, I'm really glad that we got to a point in Boston where we didn't have to go down that path. I'm not sure that, you know, some people say, "Well, it's a hammer hanging over your head, and then it forces you to do things that you wouldn't otherwise do." No, I would be doing more right now if we had not had a period of time needing to fight off within our own government misconceptions and continually having to battle that back. You know, we need to make big changes in the Boston School District, and we need the support and partnership of our state. That's where we've landed, and that's what I'm grateful that we're continuing to work towards, but I found that process to be pretty distracting for everyone and unnecessary.
So, it sounds like you think this is a good idea, that the state be prohibited?
I'm glad that we didn't go down that path in Boston. I won't pretend to know every situation about every school district across the state, but I have also heard from fellow mayors that it has not worked out in other places either.
How is the takeover avoidance relationship with the state going?
Our superintendent and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, they're in regular contact, and so, we have different items that are laid out as milestones. I mean, to be honest, my standards for BPS, the superintendent's standards, what we believe our families deserve, is those standards are far higher than what is captured in a legal document that has my name and signature on it. We are going to fulfill that, we are working towards all the pieces of that. Some of those pieces are tied, you know, for example, the number about bus on-time performance and the commitment to work to 95% on-time performance. We are, we are at 99, 98, 99% within the first 15 minutes, but with traffic, with Boston Public Schools being responsible for dropping off all of the other charter parochial schools with all different start times as well, there are extra complications that we're seeing in that. We're closer to the 89, 90% rate, and so, we're fighting to get the rest of the way there on all those little nitty-gritty details, but our ambitions for BPS are far larger than what's contained in that document.
You seem to be a tad aggravated that you're under the thumb of the state at all. You are. Is that a fair statement?
That could probably apply to any subject that we discuss.
And it would apply to this.
You know, I appreciate partnership. I think it's helpful for everyone to be on the same page and to have things in writing. I think sometimes the tone of how that is discussed and used as a threat or not is counterproductive to having a true, real productive partnership. We are there with what's on paper, we stand behind it, and I'm glad that that's where we ended up, but the process itself to get there, I think, was, did not have to go how it went, and continues to sometimes bubble up as moments of unnecessary butting heads rather than really digging in on focusing on the kids and our students.
I'll take that as a yes, Mayor Wu. Thank you very much. Nancy in, oh, I'm sorry, Michael, we'll get to you, Nancy, in a minute. Michael and JP, welcome, you're on with the mayor.
Okay. Hello, Mayor, this is Michael from JP, I'm one of the members of your task force. I really appreciate your leadership and Jim Browdy's leadership in putting rent control under serious consideration at the state house. But one of the weaknesses in the proposal, an area that could be improved, is the vacancy decontrol provision, so that when people move out or die, the landlords would be able to raise rents to any level. That would really create an incentive to, for landlords to get rid of tenants by hook or by crook, as happened in New York some years back. So, would you be willing to consider having a limitation on how much rents could go up upon turnover, perhaps imposing the same restriction, you know, the 6%, 6% to 10% on turnover rents to address that problem, prevent harassment?
Great point. Michael, thanks for the call.
And thank you, Michael, for all that you do and for helping steward this and many other affordable housing and stabilization proposals forward. We discussed this, and again, this has now officially entered the legislative process for a lot of back and forth and public conversation, so this should definitely be something that is raised and weighed and evaluated. I'll just explain why we ended up where we did for the initial proposal, which is to think very specifically about, again, what is the goal of what we want to accomplish with rent stabilization in Boston? I will be very honest that if I could wave a magic wand with a piece of paper that was a rent stabilization home rule and say, "I want to fix the housing crisis," I would do it. There are limitations to what can be accomplished through this one particular tool, and rather than try to do more than is, would feasibly work, I wanted to be very specific about what it would accomplish, and that is to keep people who are in homes now in their homes, rather than to use this as a way to indirectly try to bring down rents across the entire market, because we need to be pushing for community land trust and affordable housing and boosting housing production with more affordable development to do that part of it. And so, this is meant to complement it. Vacancy decontrol, or the, either a hybrid version, or keeping the rate pegged even if a new tenant moves in, it adds many layers of bureaucracy to needing to then investigate after every single tenant moved out, what the level was and how to match that back up and double-check and audit, and many of the ways in which we are actually slowing down new affordable housing is because there are checkpoints that we have built in and bureaucratic points that, in fact, we're now looking to streamline and simplify a bit. And so, this idea was, we want to keep people in their homes who are living in those apartments now, and we put in place just cause eviction protection so that people can't just be by hook or by crook kicked out of those apartments. And so, that together should stabilize residents, and then if it's about moving into a new apartment, it's really kind of market conditions that we are looking to bring down through housing supply.
Michael, thank you for your call.
We have a question from the audience, I believe it's Janet on climate resilience, wants to know about relocation planning. Janet, are you there? You have the question ready to go?
Can you get to that mic there, Janet, if you don't mind? Janet, in the audience at the Boston Public Library. Welcome, Janet, hi.
Hi, thanks. I'm looking at the climate crisis and your evacuation and relocation planning. Specifically, where are the designated shelter areas and the resettlement areas when the inevitable occurs?
Thank you so much, and fortunately, there are so many examples in the news all around the world of why this kind of planning is more and more necessary, and whether it's Turkey and Syria right now, or major storms, or even thinking about what's happening with the rail, the train derailment. We have staffed up to ensure that we now have a specific person focusing on climate-related emergency management and planning. They're working together very closely with our Green New Deal director and the emergency management team. So, the city does have a number of locations that are set aside and evacuation routes. That all needs to be reevaluated in the context of not just public emergencies, but flooding and where the flood paths might go, or other weather or climate-related issues that come up. And so, that is all in the process right now of being worked on, and we will, I'll find a way to report back when we have more progress.
Mayor Wu, we have to take a break. Before we do, just one last question about rent control. Do you worry about how much emphasis you put on this? I don't have any data to support what I'm about to say, but I think I'm right. It has been so center-stage, both in your campaign and in your mayoral T, that I bet if we stopped 50 people, or people in the library, and said, "List the top agenda items", while you have tons of them, I bet you that would be on almost everybody's top one, two, or three in terms of what matters to you. It's a risky proposition, as we just saw with the city council, the legislature's never been crazy about it, the governor did tell us a couple of weeks ago, she supports a local option, she wants to see the details. Do you worry about putting so many eggs in a basket that has potential to fall apart?
Well--
Politically, I mean.
I just say, I'll just say that, you know, there's the issues that you want, that I want to talk about, that I think about when I wake up every day, and housing affordability is central to that, schools are central to that, health and safety and climate, transportation. But then, there's what the media wants to talk about, too, and with, with certain topics, for example, rent control, rent stabilization, every step in the process is, you know, we're, I'm saying, talking about my same proposal, it's been the same proposal for a couple of weeks, we're talking about it again. I'm happy to answer questions about anything that gets asked of me, but in some ways, the interest is already there, however much I sort of initiate discussion about it, just the fact that I, that I think there's a moment where we are discussing this in a serious way is in and of itself groundbreaking and different for people, and it's been such a taboo subject for so many years that now, just the mention of it gets disproportionate coverage and interest. For me, what I hope that translates into is, of course, passage of this, but also a larger sense that we have other tools that we could be using for our housing crisis that maybe we haven't talked about as much, and we can rally momentum for issues that people thought were previously untouchable, and ways of thinking about things that, that we actually should be applying to a number of different subjects. So, is it risky? I mean, I suppose everything that, announcing any, it's always easier to do nothing and to try to avoid introducing any change, and certainly controversial changes, but we don't have any choice right now except for to try to tackle the hardest things in front of us.
So quickly, what's the one item that you go back to your office every day and say, "I can't believe that the press continues to ignore this thing that is unbelievably important to the people of Boston"? Is there one or two that drives you nuts?
The zoning code, the zoning code.
Oh!
Is that really what would be--
Zoning code, I'm with you, that's huge.
I think, you know, it's wonky, and there are things that keep me up at night that I do think are getting coverage, right? The Boston Public Schools, Mass and CAS are where we are in this economic moment, and then if it's things that I think matter a whole lot but nobody talks about, the zoning code and our rules around how the city grows actually directly affects the housing crisis, directly affects our climate vulnerability--
Explain that to people, because they may not understand.
Simply.
How much time do we have? The zoning code is a provision of the law that sets the rules by what you can build without having to ask for extra permission.
Right.
How tall a building can be and what it's used for in a particular part of the city. We have an extraordinarily complicated zoning code to begin with. Some cities just say, "Okay, each address, you can look it up, and it's either a commercial or residential location, and then go for it, do whatever you want." We have tables and charts where there's conditional, forbidden, or allowed use for every single usage, right? Dog grooming, dance studio, exercise, and then we've had questions about, is something that is sometimes exercise, sometimes dance, a dance studio or exercise in the zone? It's just, it's extraordinarily complicated, and it hasn't been comprehensively updated as a city since 1965. That means that the vast majority, 90% plus of new buildings, have to get waivers from the existing laws and code, which require more process, zoning board of appeals to get an appeal to that zoning code, or a BPDA process to override it. In the meantime, even if we get it right in the individual negotiations for the waiver for that house or that building, we're not seeing how the pieces fit together, which is really what the code should be for, so that everyone has everything they need in their life, access to schools nearby, good transportation, parks, open space, affordability, that should be what the zoning code holds, and right now, it's functionally obsolete.
You know what we just did? We just talked about the zoning code. You aware of that?
Zoning code is very important.
Okay, Ms. Mayor.
It's one, I spent many, much time in my youth covering the zoning board of appeals. You can see a lot of shenanigans going on in the zoning boards of appeals if nobody's paying attention. We're talking to Boston Mayor Michelle Wu, the conversation continues. After this break, you're listening to Boston Public Radio, 897-GBH. We are broadcasting live from the Boston Public Library and streaming online at youtube.com/gbhnews.
Welcome back to Boston Public Radio, Jim Browdy and Marjorie again, live from the Boston Public Library, streaming on youtube.com/gbhnews. We're continuing our discussion with Boston Mayor Michelle Wu. With us till just before noon for Ask the Mayor. You can call her at 877-301-8970, or text her, or if you're at the library, go over to our colleague Nicole, and we'll see if we can get you on from the library itself. to our colleague Nicole, and we'll see if we can get you on from the library itself.
So Mayor Woo, before we get back to the schools and cops and rent control and so forth, the zoning board of appeals, tell us about the Junior Bruins team in Boston.
I mean, this is just a remarkable story of young people. We have a team of 11 and 12-year-old hockey players from Boston who took part in the International Pee-wee Hockey Tournament over the weekend. It was up in Quebec City, and they ended up playing in the final against a team of, it was called the Ukrainian Selects, a team of Ukrainian refugees who had been assembled through finding young people in the refugee camps in Romania and traveled to this game. And not only did they start the national anthems of both teams kind of intermixed and not sort of separated team by team, but all standing together, the Ukrainian team ended up winning. And even in defeat, three to one, the Boston team was so excited, celebrating with them, celebrated, skated around, celebrating their victory together. So just an important moment of inspiration and sportsmanship and feeling that camaraderie through sports, even at such a young age.
Before we get back to the call, speaking of young age, this Office of Early Childhood, I think you invested somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 million bucks mid, mid 2022, and I believe there's some, at least preliminary results about the investment. Yes?
Yeah, I want to get the numbers right because each and every young person is, is a huge impact. So the team has informed me that since we have made that announcement, there are more than 1,000 young people now in new community-based settings for great, high-quality childcare and almost 3,400 in the Boston Public Schools. We were aiming for 900 new community seats, and so that's been a great, great success. We also had created a workforce development program because there is such a shortage of early educators as well. And so far, 150 people have taken part in that program and signed up for free tuition to get licensed with a commitment to stay and teach in Boston. We have capacity for a lot more, so we're looking to launch a campaign to recruit more to hear about this opportunity and get involved, change lives as an early educator.
How do people find out about that opportunity? Where do they go?
You can go to the city of Boston website, boston.gov, and look up the program there. We're also going to be launching a more public ad campaign, just so people are aware of this program.
You know, we have a question, Mayor Woo, from someone I'm watching on YouTube. What is being done in Boston to address bad actors within our police force? This person is interested about white nationalist participation, but I know you're in negotiations with the Boston Police now for their new contract, and we have talked many, many times, back to Commissioner Evans, about Boston Police getting fired for good reasons, getting their job back. NBC Boston reported just recently about one particular police officer who was fired back in 2009 for strangling someone or trying to, the person survived, but caused a brain bleed, and then was fired many years before that because he was one of the police officers involved in the brutal beating of Michael Cox, who's now the police commissioner. He was fired twice, cost the city $3 million, and he was brought back by arbitration to his job. So if you could touch on, on that policy and also the caller's question about participation of white nationalist activities.
Yeah, this is an area where, again, sometimes the, like, similar to the zoning code, where actually many of the impacts that we see and feel more broadly in community are tied down to sometimes arcane bit of legalese that, that we don't talk about a lot. The police contracts, the collective bargaining agreements that govern not only wages and salaries, but a whole lot of operational pieces, really impact discipline and accountability as well. And so one big push that we are still undergoing as we are in negotiations with our police unions is to establish parameters where there will be cases that you cannot appeal certain aspects of. When there are certain kinds of determinations that are made, we don't need a whole extra back and forth for many, many months or even years to restore people to the force. This is, it's a job that is so important for the city. I've had the chance to ride along with our officers and see the work that they put in day in and day out. We are so proud to be a city where many look to for professionalism, for training, for community focus. But just a couple, just one or a few incidents where folks who actually shouldn't be on the job, staying on the job, affects the trust for everyone. And so that is actually a provision that is in the best interest of all of our officers to ensure that those who should not be doing this job are not doing the job.
And, but that's pretty important to the union there, too. Is this something that is a red line for you, meaning if there's not some reform of this arbitration process that you just described? There's no contract?
Yes.
That's, okay. One last thing about police. I've asked you about this a lot, and I still don't understand what's going on. There was allegedly a Boston police officer, Abasiano, I'm sure I'm mispronouncing it, who was at January 6th. He accused Vice President of treason, said apparently on his Twitter account, "Hope you never sleep well again," meaning him. He has been on medical leave, living in New Hampshire, for almost two full years since January 6th. I asked you about it a couple of weeks ago. You said there has been a process. So I guess I have a few questions. Can you describe what process is going on, why it hasn't been resolved in two-plus years, and does the city know if his claim of medical disability is legit, Mayor?
I can't say everything or too much because the processes are still ongoing now. What I, what I will say is that anytime there is a complaint raised about behavior that is not representative of the standards of our officers or misconduct or, or any category, there are multiple mechanisms to investigate on this, including the Internal Affairs Department. There has been extensive review happening, and those, those processes usually involve gathering facts, interviewing many individuals related to kind of test the validity of various pieces of what, what, what has been presented, and then having due process where there's a back and forth with the individual around their legal rights and a hearing and, and all of that. And so given the many transitions within various roles that are impacted there, Internal Affairs Bureau and Commissioner, it has been a way more drawn-out process than it should have been. But we are now with all of those roles firmly solidified for a few months now, working through this and other processes that are ongoing.
In May of 2021, then Acting Head of the Boston Police, Greg Long, said, "This will be resolved in a few weeks." It's like 18 months later. So is there a realistic timeframe on when this issue? And from what I read, and you may, I'm sure you know more than I, virtually every city in America that had a law enforcement person at January 6th has resolved the issue one way or another. We're, we're an outlier in this regard. What, what kind of timeframe are we talking about?
I can't put a specific timeframe on it, but I'll just say, ask me again next month, and hopefully I'll have more to say.
Fair enough.
We have another audience question, this one on youth finance. I believe the questioner is Greer.
Hi, Greer.
And that wants to talk about the Be Smart program.
I'm actually reading a question for Greer, who's here. She has a medical issue.
Okay. Could you raise your mic just, just till, perfect.
Okay. I'm actually reading a question on behalf of Greer, who has a medical issue. My name is Robert Redd. I'm a former teacher in Boston Public Schools over 33 years. It's a two-part question. Mayor Woo, what is your plan for dealing with youth violence in the city of Boston? That's the first part. And also, have you reached out to the individuals who are involved in the very successful Be Smart program, which was implemented very successfully? The Be Smart program consisted of a collaboration between law enforcement, state police, prison authorities, Boston Police, and youth service providers, boys' clubs, YMCA, and so forth. They, the site was the Chevoo Skating Rink in Mattapan, and that was a site for youth covering the entire city. So that, those are the.
Can I ask you, what'd you teach for 33 years?
Well, I retired teaching English and Reading, but I was an administrator for 12 years, and I retired from Boston Latin School in 2008.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Thank you for all that you've done for our city and our young people. And thank you for reading the question on behalf of Greer as well. So this, this is something that keeps me up at night when we think about what our young people are facing now and the challenges that they have. The pandemic very much is still tangible in their lives and in the impacts that we see, even, even recently, in the last few days, and other incident where juveniles have been involved. And we see the number of juveniles who are showing up in police reports about any number of public safety incidents of all, of all types on the rise. We hear from educators who are in the classrooms today and school nurses and guidance counselors and psychologists that the depth and scale of need for mental health supports in, in our schools is very, very acute. And so we're working on all of those pieces in, in the infrastructure. For youth violence broadly, I think there's a number of, our new senior advisor for public safety, who, Isaac Yablo, who follows in the footsteps of Dr. Rufus Falk, who really helped steer a, a transformation in how the city wraps around supports through public safety to get at root causes. Isaac is, is incredible and is this month launching his specific community engagement process around some of these issues in partnership with Dr. Kevin Simone, who is our new Chief Behavioral Officer for the city, who is focused on youth mental health in particular, and some community partners like James Hills, who've been focusing on having a healing space for community members as well to process and, and address trauma that we see compounded in the neighborhoods. Most of all, there's kind of a framework of three parts of experience that we want to build into this. Your lived experience as a resident and community member in our city and for young people in our school system. The proven experience, the, your proven truth of what the data tells us about where incidents are happening and how we are, we know down to school communities and down to particular parts of the city, what supports are needed. And then the built truth and the built experience of what our systems are designed right now to incentivize or de-incentivize and changing, pushing the levers there. And so we continue to gather every Friday for our Youth Safety Task Force through the Boston Public Schools and 30 agencies, including some of those community partners. I'll make sure that we are up to date with the Be Smart program. I suspect that others have already been consulting them to build what we put forward now, but I will, I will make sure that that happens.
By the way, we had Isaac Capello on, and people can search that on our website. Listen, he was really an impressive young guy.
You know, one quick thing, we wanted to talk to you about the Last Call Foundation. But before we get to that, I was thrilled to know that we got two electric buses and we got, we're on the way. So tell people about what's going on with the bus fleet.
We are launching the largest electric school bus deployment in the Northeast, and the buses will be on the roads, or they're on the roads now, running their test routes. And Superintendent and I were able to experience that and bring back the childhood trauma of sitting on a school bus. All the memories of that. Where do I sit? Even getting on, I must feel, actually, go to the back or the front. It's a quiet, smooth ride. It's, they get, I'm trying to remember the exact number, but something like 160 miles on a full charge.
That's great.
So great for within the city, great for the schedules of a bus to be able to charge up and then go back out.
No fumes, no toxic fumes coming out.
No pollution, decreasing asthma in our communities. And so we'll have 20 buses on the roads starting after February vacation, and this is February school break. And this is going to be one way that we are tying together all of the benefits for our young people, for climate, for health, for jobs. The Madison Park Vocational Technical School will be where high school students have a career track to learn to service these exact electric vehicles so that they're also stepping into jobs of the future.
We want to ask you, before you go, as Marjorie said, I know you're going next to this Last Call Foundation thing, but one quick question from Kate in Roselandale. As the mayor's likely aware, a kindergarten was struck by a vehicle crossing Center Street in West Roxbury in December, which is at least the third pedestrian accident in three years on the street, including a death in 2019. Crossing the four-lane section of Center Street is a nightmare. My kid's attending Linden, and she goes on and on. What is going to be done to make Center Street safer, and when's it going to happen?
Yeah, we need to do something. We see pedestrian risk on the rise everywhere. Some of that is distracted driving, some of that is sort of people feeling like if there's traffic on certain parts, they need to rush through in other parts. But a lot of that is, what we can control are the design choices for our streets and how we can more quickly deploy traffic calming and traffic slowing infrastructure. We, as a city, used to have prohibitions against speed bumps and speed humps and other kind of intersection, small residential street changes. Those are very important. We see, are surrounding communities adopting much of that, and so we're looking to deploy that in many of our neighborhood side streets. That doesn't work for the bigger thoroughfares like Center Street and, and some of our busier roadways, where you need to do more in terms of looking intersection by intersection of how to narrow and slow. And so this is, you know, when I ask our transportation planners in City Hall where they think the priority is, many of them, you know, we've had stops and starts and stops and starts in that part of the city and continue to see major crashes and injuries. And so this is where I think all of our conscience tells us every day that goes by, we are just praying and hoping that something doesn't happen. I'd like to get started on, on working with community to make something happen.
We only have a couple of minutes left. We know your next stop is the Last Call Foundation thing. I bet you a decent number of people know what it is, but for those who don't, describe what it is and who it is dedicated to.
The incredible Kathy Crosby Bell, who is the mother of the late firefighter, Michael Kennedy, who passed in, in the fire along with Lieutenant Edward Walsh, when the flames overcame everything in a building where there was, it seems like welding happening unlicensed, and the flames overcame everything and even burned through the hose so that the water couldn't get to where the firefighters had initially gone in. And so Kathy and her legion of, of supporters have been fighting to think about how we can make firefighting as a profession safe for our firefighters as well, who are saving lives. And so she's been focused on getting carcinogenic materials out of firehouses, really changing the layout so that those materials aren't then contaminating the clothes that are going home for, then with families and everything. Today, we are kicking off the installation of a new kind of hose that is a different material and will provide much more resistance to high heat for a longer period of time. Those few minutes that that hose will last will save lives.
Yeah. She sounds terrific, and it's called the Last Call Foundation.
It's right down, it's right over there. I think it's Marbo Street, yeah, just a couple of blocks away from where we are, where we are now. So how's your Valentine's Day going, Mayor Woo?
I had to stay up all night.
Valentine's cries for the kids?
For the kids, and then I forgot, my husband was supposed to get it, and neither of us got it, and then it was late, and I was coming back from an event, and I was like, okay, everyone's close except for Walgreens. I went into Walgreens at School Street, and they didn't have, I mean, they don't have little kid supplies there.
Oh, no.
So then I just buy packs of, like, the generic Big Valentines and candies, and taping them up in little rolls all night, 45 of them.
Forty-five of them. Oh, you have my deepest sympathy, Mayor Woo.
Why don't you just, why don't you just order your staff to do it for you, Mayor Woo? No? Only kidding. Don't get nervous, everybody. Mayor Woo, Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Please join us in thanking the mayor for his time today.